I'd like to call the City Council Caucus Meeting to order. All right, we have one public hearing tonight, if the clerk would read that.
Public hearing regarding a proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 230-2 of the Code of the City of Schenectady related to the consolidation of residential lots.
Okay, as I said, that is one public hearing. Then for final consideration, if the clerk would read number one.
For final consideration, an ordinance amending Chapter 144 of the Administrative Code of the City of Schenectady relative to a dog enumeration fee.
All right, I know Mr. Erickson's going to ask us to hold that, but the reality is all this is doing is setting a fee. It's not getting into who we're hiring. We could potentially hire people on contracts as opposed to making them city employees. So I think that's something to be discussed in the future. But for right now, this is just to set the fee. Okay? All right. So if there's no objection, then that'll be on consent. Okay, item number two.
Item number two, an ordinance establishing zoning regulations pertaining to halfway houses.
This has been discussed in numerous meetings without objections on consent. Item number three.
Item number three, for original consideration, an ordinance amending Article 4 Subsurface Spaces of Streets of Chapter 228 of the Code of the City of Schenectady, Streets and Sidewalks, and Chapter 138 Building Plumbing and Electrical Standards, introduced only with a resolution calling for a public hearing relative to proposed legislation regulating vaults within the city right of ways.
Without objection on consent. Item number four.
Item number four, a resolution calling for a public hearing concerning housing and community development needs for the federal consolidated plan, CDBG.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number five.
Item number five, a resolution authorizing the sale of parcel number 39.71-3-37 to Metroplex.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number six.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a claim filed on behalf of the Schenectady Police Department with GECO.
Discussed in Claims Committee without objection on consent. Item number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a claim by George Brinson.
Also discussed in Claims without objection on consent. Item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution appointing Richard Hominek to the City of Schenectady Civilian Police Review Board.
Discussed in Committee without objection on consent. Item number nine.
Item number nine, a resolution recognizing the American-made movie event.
This will be taken out of order. Mrs. Brucker is going to present that. And item number 10.
Item number 10, a resolution honoring Denise Brucker.
That will also be taken out of order, and I will present that one. And then we have two additional items.
Item number 11, a resolution authorizing the transfer of title of 1335 State Street.
Discussed in Claims Committee tonight without objection on consent. And item number 12.
Item number 12, a resolution authorizing the transfer of title of 459 Haiti Street.
Also discussed in Claims tonight without objection on consent. If there's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus Meeting, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, Ms. Prazzo, seconded by Mr. Riggi, all in favor?
Aye.
I will now call the City Council Meeting to order for January 13th, 2014. Let me begin by welcoming John Mootivaren to the table, and then if you would please stand for the invocation by Reverend James Brookout of Bridge Christian Church.
Dear Heavenly Father, as I address this group in prayer, help me to pray as you prayed, with love and compassion over the elders and leaders of Jerusalem, your blessed city. These people are my people, my brothers and sisters that I grew up with. We all are here tonight, and we want your best for our city. Thank you for our city's leaders. Continue to give them the wisdom of God to meet the difficult challenges of this generation. Thank you for the wonderful work you're doing here in the City of Schenectady. Lord, I break every old curse, every bondage, every hex and every spell, every hindering spirit that has tried to sabotage this city's destiny. We declare that bondage is over businesses, over companies, over families, be broken. Send angels to guard our city gates from allowing evil to come into our city. Keep every secret sin out. Bless the courthouse and empty the crack houses. We break the spirit of poverty, and we declare that new technical startup companies are coming back to Schenectady, that people are coming out of debt, that people are going to get down payments on their homes. Lord, we are going to start acting like we are financially blessed. We are not broke, defeated, dumb, or helpless. That's a lie. And as a city, we are prospered. Give us a new love language. Bring forgiveness to hearts from old hurts and wounds. We want our kids back who've dropped out of school, giving up on life. Give us a breakthrough in the heavens. Spirit of the living God, we know the best days for our city start tonight, right now. And we know and believe that you heard our prayer, and we declare that there is a breakthrough here tonight as we take place in our situations over this city. And we ask this all in the name of our Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
I'll ask Denise Brucker to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to declare on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, as this is the first council meeting for the year 2014, we're going to begin with the mayor with his state of the city speech.
Want to welcome everyone here. It's great to see so many smiling faces and the positive attitude in this community. But good evening, Council President King, members of the City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight and recap some of the things that we've done in the last year and outline some of our goals and objectives for 2014. I'll put on a pair of glasses because the aging process is catching up with me. But I want to thank my wife Caroline for being here tonight, joining us, and how she tolerates the late night phone calls and some of the demands of this schedule. My brother Gregory, who's been a longtime supporter and just makes things easier. Want to welcome Anthony Jazinski, the new Chair of the Schenectady County Legislature. I've known him since Chief, even before that, in the Rotterdam Police Department. He follows in the long line of strong leadership in the Schenectady County Legislature. It is a group that is now geared toward results. We look forward to working together, and I'm proud of our friendship and proud of the relationship the city has with the Schenectady County and look to continue to build that. So Anthony, thank you for being here tonight. Ed Kozier, former City Council member, member of the Board of Education. Larry Spring, our Superintendent of Schools, come in. Chuck Steiner, the President of the Chamber of Schenectady County. Thank you, Chuck, for being here tonight. John Roth from High Bridge Development, one of those people who's had vision and tenacity to see the opportunity within this community. David Buco of the Gillesse Corporation. David, again, I thank you and your team for the continued efforts that you make, that you have made, and you make every day to make this community better. Ray Legere from Legere Restoration. You know, his sense of humor, his tenacity again to solve problems. Ray, I'm just proud to have you as a friend, part of this community, and you just make everyone's job so much easier. Antonio Civitella, the rising star here, innovative, but just a good man here in Schenectady, and so we're proud to have you tonight. The representatives of Angelo Santa Barbara, Philip Steck and Senator C.C. Kaczak, thank you for being here. Bill Cook from the Letter Carriers, Ed Ritz, members of the PBA, Richard McElroy V. Ackert from CSEA, representing the men and women who do the day-to-day work here in the City of Schenectady. Thank you for joining us. Want to thank again everyone here and those who are able to watch this in all our City Council meetings at home via open-stage media. Open-stage media is a model of public access, bringing the level of transparency to this government that other communities envy. 2013 was generally a good year. We saw the continuation of development in our downtown with the completion of the new $7 million headquarters for TransFinder, new restaurants, Zen, Johnny's, Center Street Pub, the transitioning of Thai Thai, the expansion of Marada's and Niko's Pizza. There were significant milestones for Frank Merkin Product, Ellis School of Nursing, Ellis Medicine's new emergency room, Warren Tire, Hermes Music, Civitella's Italian pastry, and Brown's Archery, to name a few. We were fortunate to obtain $5 million through the governor's Regional Economic Development Council Consolidated Funding Process for the Alco site on Erie Boulevard, one of the largest awards in the state. With the help from our state legislators, we were able to restore the tax-exempt status of 13 churches, which allowed their congregations to continue to do the good work they do for Schenectady. We continued our monthly open-house program, working with the city school district, realtors, and bankers to show the opportunity for homeownership within our community. We instituted healthcare reforms, which Schenectady County helped negotiate as part of our sales tax agreement, and I thank Chris Gardner for doing that. The CSEA Benefit Plan, the Canadian drugs, and our Medicare Advantage plans are saving us about $3 million a year. The financial condition of the City of Schenectady continues to be stable. We will have a modest surplus from the 2013 budget. The city has managed within the constraints of the 2% tax cap set by the state, and in 2013 began using capital projects reserves, which will move Schenectady toward a pay-as-you-go approach for funding some of our capital needs. After review of existing bond proceeds conducted during 2013, as well as the use of capital projects reserves that we created at the end of 2012, we adopted a 2014 capital budget that is 35% less than that of 2013's capital budget. This helps improves the city's liquidity by reducing the amount of debt we are anticipating issuing. Overall, I anticipate the 2013 general fund balance will have increased approximately 1.4 million since 2011. And additionally, to improve our budget flexibility, we increased the amount of our fund balance designated as unassigned from $76,000 in 2011 to $3.7 million in 2012, an approximately 98% increase. And I anticipate when we close out the books in 2013, the unassigned fund balance will closely mirror that of the 2012 amount. Our enhanced in-house collection efforts resulted in 42% of the 2012 property tax liens being paid and reduced the number of properties with liens by a little over 49%. This year, we'll be able to accept payments online, which will clearly make Schenectady more user-friendly and hopefully will encourage people to pay in a more timely fashion. In 2013, we continued the trend to reduce our Part I crimes, the most serious crimes. We've seen a reduction of just over 13% in the last two years. Proactive policing produced just under a 30% decrease in our car larcenies. Active warrants reduced by 20%. Our utilization of data-driven policing is showing results. And as we become more sophisticated in our data collection and better integrated in our analysis with both code enforcement, these efforts should continue. In October, Commissioner Bennett, Chief Kilcullen, gave a presentation of our highly successful enforcement efforts dealing with problem bars. There were a few establishments that continually needed aggressive policing, and as the commissioner pointed out to you, that during an approximate 24-month period, they generated around 1,000 calls for service. I met with the owners of each of these establishments, along with the Public Safety Commissioner, the Chief of Police, Fire Chief, and the Building Inspector. I told each of them that we wanted them to be successful businesses. We wanted to work with them and to help them in any way we could, but if they continue to create a problem environment of nuisance calls, fights, stabbings, shootings, and even homicides, I wanted them out of business. Even with our efforts to work with them, the underlying problems continued. Today, every one of these places is out of business, and this is a better and safer community. I compliment the Public Safety Command Staff, the men and women of the Police Department and Fire Departments, in our code operations, and our friends in the State Liquor Authority for a job well done. Over the last several years, we've seen a proliferation of neighborhood stores. Many are great places run by good people who bring convenience and values to our neighborhood. However, there are some that don't. Instead, they foster an environment of drug activity, buy stolen merchandise, and their accounting is creative at best, and they clearly have a negative impact on our neighborhoods. I've directed the Public Safety Commissioner and the Police Chief to put in place a proactive plan to deal with these businesses. Modeled after our efforts of dealing with the problem bars, I, along with the Public Safety Commissioner, the Police Chief, the Fire Chief, the Building Inspector, and other appropriate city staff, will be meeting with these owners. We want them to be successful. We want them to make money, and they should add value to our neighborhoods. But if they don't play by the rules, I want them out of business, and I feel confident that next year I will be able to report back to you that we have made significant improvements in the quality of our neighborhood stores in this community. Our regionally recognized fire department responded to just under 15,000 calls for service in 2013. These men and women of this department continue to amaze me with their ability to contain major fires and minimize damage to adjacent buildings. Our arrest rate in arson cases is currently about 40% in this community, where the national average is about 7%. They're doing a good job of fire suppression, good cause and origin investigations, and they're holding accountable those individuals who are intentionally starting fires. More than 60% of our calls for service in the fire department are emergency medical calls. This is the type of call that continues to grow, and that we need to look for ways to better manage our response to a large percentage of these calls. These are calls that come from individuals that have medical conditions or situations that does not need the full deployment of paramedics and ambulance transportation to an emergency room. This is a problem that I will assign to our new Fire Chief in the next few months. We must work together with our healthcare community to look for ways to better educate individuals on the appropriate service providers that they should turn to. And I do want to thank Chief Delaraco, who is unable to be here tonight, for his exemplary service for this community, and wish him and his family only the best as he retires from the Schenectady Fire Department in the next few weeks. Our golf course had a very successful year. We had approximately 28,000 rounds of open golf, and with league play, our total was about 50,000 rounds of golf. The condition of the course remained one of the best in the area. The transition to a new pro, Matt Daley, went very well. Matt has done an exceptional job of projecting a positive and friendly and great community image at Schenectady Muni. I want to thank the Golf Advisory Committee, chaired by Don Clow, for the work they have done. Soon, we will present to the City Council a recommendation for a consultant to start the drainage and irrigation improvements and the implementation of the course's long-range plan. I would remind everyone that money spent at the golf course does not affect the general fund. The course is self-financing, and our golfers pay for it. Our Office of General Services, last year, we continued our focus on the rehabilitation of street surface in our city. We paved about six and a half miles of street. We started the rehab of Lower State Street, and we almost completed the reconstruction of Erie Boulevard. The top coat of blacktop and landscaping will be done first thing in the spring. Our wastewater treatment plant, under the leadership of Director of Water and Wastewater, Paul LaFond, continues to be a model of municipal efficiency. It operated last year with 100% regulatory compliance, and since we brought the plant back under full city control, we have had zero odor complaints from our neighbors. That, I believe, is the first time that's happened in history of the plant. And we save at that plant about $25,000 to $29,000 a month, where we are generating electricity with a cogen facility there. And as we close out the books this year, there'll be approximately $290,000 credit that will take for revenue coming in for septic and sludge treatment at the facility. Not the most sexy topic, but it's bottom-line revenue that would not have been available to this city had we continued with a private vendor running it. One of the areas that we have talked about that we, as a community, need to improve is our recycling. Commissioner Carl Olson and I have had conversations about helping redesign some of our recycling brochures with Chris Riley, Al Fox, and Chuck Hunt, who are joining us tonight here in the front from Creating Y Media. Carl has some experience with different recycling projects and thought that a community-wide project needed to have a youth component. Chris and his team came up what I thought was a clear and simple message to start our new recycling campaign. It starts with me. And if you look at the graphics there, a little bit humorous, so look at it. But as we talked about it, the rules, the goals, the benefits of recycling are fairly simple to understand. It's something that a fifth or sixth grader gets. As we thought about it, most of the things that we do are not that complicated. If you do construction on your home, you need a building permit. If you own a dog, you need a license. If you own a house, you need to pay taxes. If you park in front of a meter, you need to put money in it. If a fifth or sixth grader can understand this, it's a message that we must get to the rest of our residents in the city. So I say it starts with me tonight. Next week, it'll be the City Council. Then who knows? We'll go across the state and across the country solving all these municipal problems. But it started with me and Creating Media Y here tonight. So I thank you guys for your help and again, looking forward to an exciting undertaking project. Homeownership Made Easy in Schenectady. It's kind of the umbrella title that I've put to a number of our programs that we have. And my goal is to make homeownership, not only buying a home, but the lifetime of ownership, easy and cost-effective, to create real value in the City of Schenectady. Distressed property in our community still remains our biggest challenge. Two and a half years ago, when I assumed this position, all of our records in code enforcement were manual, paper files. Our Chief Building Inspector, Eric Schilling, and his staff have done a great job implementing the landlord registration program and the vacant building inventory, and through their efforts, our code citations are up over 95%. This continues to send the message that we're going to work with people who are willing to work with us to improve their property. But those that don't, I want them in court, and I want to held accountable for their inaction. We've been fortunate to have so many community partners step forward to help in creative ways to help market Schenectady's housing potential to middle-class homeowners. We first had Key Bank come forward in the fall of 2011 with a very aggressive mortgage package. The Daily Gazette was an early supporter of our efforts. I have Ray Legere who's here tonight. Again, one of the people who stepped up the plate trying to solve problems, trying to make things happen. We had NBT Bank, Citizens Bank, Prospect Lending, Trustco Bank, and other financial institutions step up and offer to work with homebuyers in our community. We've had a broad group of realtors, Prudential Manor Homes, Realty USA, Coldwell Banker. I semi-joke that it's easier to list the companies who are not helping with our homes program than the ones that are. But these realtors have been aggressively marketing the property in Schenectady, and I thank them for their help. Last year, we held a very successful Realtor Day that brought approximately 200 realtors and bankers to hear about housing opportunities, economic development activities, and initiatives in the city and in the school district. We again will hold this event this year, and I want to thank Mary Delisandro from Prudential Manor Homes, who headed up this effort. And thank you, Mary. It's clearly changed the mind of many people about Schenectady's image. And I do want to thank Larry Spring, Superintendent of City School District, for his partnership and help the school district has provided over the past year. Larry clearly has a more difficult job than I do, and his success will have a greater impact on home values than the initiatives that we are doing here at City Hall. So if Larry asks for your help, please help him in any way you can. Send that message back to our state legislators, because some of the things are a little bit controversial, but they have an effect dramatically on the quality of life in this community and our tax rate. Tonight, I'm pleased to announce a new partner, Union Graduate College. We have with us tonight Mel Chudzik, who's the former dean of the college and currently a professor there, Malcolm Butthorn, who is the team coordinator for Union Graduate College Homes Capstone Project, Brian Gallagher, Molly McElroy, and Janet Tracy. Over the next few months, this team, working with city staff and our community partners, will evaluate the many aspects and facets of our homes project, looking to see what works, what needs improvement, and put in place a formal business plan that will enable us to better market and articulate the housing opportunities in the City of Schenectady. In conclusion, I want to thank again everyone for coming out tonight. I want to thank our great city staff, Bill Winkler, Director of Operations, Commissioner of General Services, Carl Olson, Finance Commissioner Deborah DiGenova, Public Safety Commissioner Wayne Bennett, our Fire Chief Michael Delaraco, Police Chief Brian Kilcullen, for the job they do every day. The City Council and my administration have been tasked with answering the question, what makes a good and thriving community? what makes a good and thriving community? We've answered by proposing housing initiatives and revitalization efforts, striving to exemplify responsible and transparent government, making sure our public safety operations are responsive and effective, and agreeing to make sound investments in our city's infrastructure. We've been working with our school district to improve the education of our children, continue to build on the success of our thriving unified economic development team by creating new partnerships, recruit new investments, both large and small, in addition to supporting our already established businesses and community organizations. As you look around our city, you can see the results of our efforts. It is truly an exciting time for the city of Schenectady. However, our work is not nearly done. So I thank you for your past support, look forward to working with you this year as we continue to make Schenectady a better place to work, visit, and call a home. Thank you. Madam President, I yield the floor.
All right. We'll get back to our regular business if the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Barazzo. Ms. Porterfield.
Here.
Mr. Erickson.
Here.
Mr. Riggi.
Here.
Mr. Buteveron.
Present.
Ms. Brucker.
Here.
Ms. King.
Present. We have two out-of-order resolutions, and I'm going to start with the American-made movie event. Mrs. Brucker.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to call up Chad Putnam, and it's Jennifer Lawrence from Youth Build here this evening. Pardon me?
Rebecca.
Oh, Rebecca. My name's Rebecca. And anybody else? So pleased that our city of Schenectady is taking an interest in this American-made movie, especially with all the emphasis lately. For those of you who don't know, I work in the area of workforce development, and advanced manufacturing has come a long way, has become a very large part of the community, a very large part of workforce development. And it's so important to get the word out that manufacturing is certainly not the manufacturing that we knew of even ten years ago. So, Madam President.
You have the floor.
Whereas, on January twenty-first, two thousand fourteen, has been declared as the date of the American-made movie event to be held at Proctor's GE Theater and hosted by the city of Schenectady. And whereas, on January twenty-first, two thousand fourteen, Schenectadians and residents of the greater capital region are encouraged to participate in this important community event. And whereas, the American-made movie event will feature a screening of the new documentary, American-made Movie, starting at six-thirty, and will be followed by a panel discussion moderated by Jack Arnakey. And whereas, the panel discussion, starting at eight, will feature local and statewide leaders, including our mayor, Gary McCarthy, Ken Palaski, I hope I didn't ruin that last name, Bukowski. See, I'm Polish. I should know how to say that, too. Vice President of Government Affairs with the Business Council of New York State, Dr. Quentin Bullock, President of Schenectady County Community College, Alessandro Gerbini, President of Gatherers Granola, representing entrepreneurs, and an entrepreneur right here in the city of Schenectady, I might add. And whereas, the tickets to the event are only five dollars, they're available at the Proctor's box office and online, with many event expenses being paid for by the generous contributions of area sponsors and stakeholders. And whereas, and this is so important, net proceeds from the event will benefit a one-time scholarship for a Youth Build participant who will be pursuing a manufacturing technology program at Schenectady County Community College. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Schenectady does hereby proclaim January twenty-one, two thousand fourteen, as the American-made movie event day in the city of Schenectady, and further be it resolved that the City Council encourages all Schenectadians to support American-made manufacturers and to take part in this historic event.
Madam Chair, I move the resolution. Is there a second? Okay, Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
My name is Chad Putnam, and I'm the deputy city clerk. And on behalf of the small committee, including myself, Bill Cook, and Nancy Gold with Tough Travelers, I want to extend our sincere gratitude to Mayor McCarthy, as well as the city councils, and all the sponsors and stakeholders involved in supporting this event and helping to make it a success. And all the details are noted in the trifold, and I have plenty of them here, and there's also more information at proctors.org if you'd like to get tickets or get more information. But at first, I'd just like to introduce some of the guests that I brought here with me, including Alessandro Gerbini. He is the entrepreneur on our panel, and he is with Gatherers Granola, so I'm going to have him say a few words. And also Rebecca Pavola, she is the director of the Youth Build Program at Northeast, and she wanted to introduce some of the students she brought with her, so.
Thank you, Chad. Gatherers Granola was started about three years ago, but we were invited to join Schenectady and move here with the help of Metroplex, and we've been welcomed very warmly by the Chamber of Commerce, as well as many of the other businesses here in Schenectady. Gatherers is a maker of artisan granolas, where you sell in eleven states, and we're expanding pretty rapidly. The majority of our workforce is based right here in Schenectady, and we're going to be attending many of the career fairs at Union and Schenectady County Community College in order to hire more people and really become more tied to Schenectady and its economic development. So thank you for having us.
Good evening. My name's Rebecca Pavola, and I have with me Josiah Williams, who's part of our CNA track, Onisha Dancy, and Donna Barnhill, who are both part of our Green Construction track. They are all working to pass the test assessing secondary completion and moving on to additional career goals, hopefully one that will be related to manufacturing in America. So thank you.
Thank you for being here.[1048.83][1048.83](APPLAUSE) All right. Our second out-of-order resolution is a resolution honoring Denise Brucker. So I'm going to ask Ms. Barazzo to come up and take the chair here while I come down to present that resolution. Well, as I think everyone knows, Mrs. Brucker has decided to move out of the city and moved to Niskiuna, and tonight is her last meeting with us.
She changed her mind after the state.
Oh, good. Okay.
And I know there's some real estate people here, so.
You're right.
It's a big deal. My husband will kill me. Is he here?
Yes, he is.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yep. And anyways, Denise and I have put a lot of years in on this council, and so I would like to read the resolution. You have the floor. Whereas, Denise Brucker was born in the city of Schenectady and has lived here her entire life. And whereas, her commitment to public service is reflected in career choices that include Schenectady County Job Trading Agency, Schenectady County District Attorney's Office, Rockefeller College, Schenectady Municipal Housing, and currently Schenectady County Community College, where she's the administrator of the Trade Act Adjustment Community College Grant. And whereas, Ms. Brucker was first elected to the Schenectady City Council in nineteen ninety-seven, and in recognition of her leadership ability, was elected as council president in two thousand one and in two thousand twelve. And whereas, her passion for public safety has been demonstrated through her membership on the Public Safety Committee during her entire tenure with the city council, and her serving as chair of that committee for seven years. And whereas, her zeal to improve the standard of living in our community through meaningful employment has driven her to work in the areas of professional development and workforce development. Whereas, Ms. Brucker's desire to improve the standard of living in our community is further evidenced by her membership on the Regional Board of the Continuing Education Association of New York, her co-chairing of the New York State Department of Labor Healthcare Workforce Development Subcommittee, and as former chair of the Schenectady Industrial Development Agency. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council and the mayor pause in their deliberations to thank Denise Brucker for her tireless service to the Schenectady community, to honor her for her dedication, and to wish her the best in the future. Madam Chair, I move the adoption of the resolution. The resolution's been moved. Do I have a second? Mr. Erickson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Actually, before I let you speak, we also have a plaque presented to Denise Brucker's Schenectady City Council in nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand five, two thousand seven to two thousand fourteen, in recognition of fourteen years of exemplary service on the Schenectady City Council, with a quote from Teddy Roosevelt, "Far and away, the best prize that life offers is the chance to work hard at work worth doing."
I'm using the podium since it's my last night, and Gary so nicely invited all these people here for me tonight, so it's great. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. As Peggy said, I started my career here in nineteen ninety-seven, took office in nineteen ninety-eight, and that was with the help of friends and family and many dedicated volunteers. I'm very, very proud to have been a part of the ongoing redevelopment and really recreation of the city of Schenectady, and brought to us by city staff, administration, volunteers, and the work of an entire city council. And certainly, as I heard the mayor state of the city tonight, I also have to add, certainly with Metroplex, but certainly with the business people who came to Schenectady, who believed in the city of Schenectady and invested in themselves personally, as well as financially, I can't thank you enough. In nineteen ninety-seven or nineteen ninety-eight, when I took office, downtown Schenectady and other businesses within the city of Schenectady, it looked a lot different than it does right now. The movement of TransFinder, the Paul Mitchell School has made, and many of the other businesses and restaurants have certainly brought the city of Schenectady alive. And I'm so happy when I see people who have moved to different places and come back and go, wow, you know, Denise, I was down in Schenectady the other night, and the streets were crowded. You know, there's people down there, there's restaurants. And so, none of it could be done by one city council member, by a city council, by administration, but certainly as a unit, as a team, which I see all of you being part of, and I really thank you very much for that. You make us all look good. I'd also like to say, I've had the privilege to serve with many dedicated public servants, and some of them are here tonight, some of them aren't, but Frank Marizio, that I served with on the council, Tom Delasala, Mike Pettah, Ed Kozier, certainly Barbara Blanchard and Judge Blanchefield, the past city clerks, Carolyn Friello and Eileen Versace, and certainly our present city clerk, Chuck Thorne, and deputy clerk, Chad Putnam. You make our job all a lot easier. I know sometimes we drive you crazy, but that's part of the job. One of the most important lessons I learned, because people had asked me when I was leaving, oh, you know, tell me about your accomplishments. What have you done? What are the things that you have accomplished? And at the risk of sounding overly humble, which people who know me know that I'm probably not, I think it comes from teamwork. It truly does. I've had a lot of time to reflect on this. We closed on our house back in August and weren't able to move into it until two weeks ago. But during that time, you know, you start to think about, well, I'm going to have to say something at the end, and what am I going to say? What have I accomplished? And I think it all comes from being, as I said, being part of a team, being able to work with other people who may not share the same idea as you do, and really trying to figure out, what is the best idea? Is it my idea? Is it your idea? How do we figure out? How do we come to consensus? The consensus part is usually the most difficult, or sometimes knowing the right thing is also the most difficult thing to do, or the most difficult thing to come to a conclusion with. I would like to think that my many years on the city council have taught me that at least my strength is in building and maintaining relationships. And in order to do that, many times, you do reach across the aisle, and you do reach out to people that maybe whose ideas in the first start weren't your ideas, but were able to come to a consensus, or have someone convince you differently. And I think you become much strongly convinced when that's the case. In terms of support from other people within the city of Schenectady, or supporters of really this entire city of Schenectady, certainly, many people who know me know that my father was a city fireman for many, many years in the city of Schenectady. So certainly, my support of the Schenectady Fire Department has been ongoing, but I have to tell you, it was an easy lift. They are one of the most professional departments, not just in our state, not just in our city, but I would really go so far as to say, in our nation, and I'm sure there's many people beyond me that would back me up on that. Their dedication to the residents, to the city of Schenectady, and to the entire city is demonstrated on a daily basis. You know, another gem in our public safety are the dispatchers of the city of Schenectady. They're on the front lines of some of the worst calls anyone could ever receive. They hear about accidents, they hear about deaths, they hear about tragedies of the city first, and have to maintain a calm demeanor and get individuals the help and the assistance they need. Which brings me to our police department. Our Schenectady Police Department has come a very long way from the days of indictments and oversights by the Department of Justice, under the leadership of Commissioner Bennett, Chief Kilcullen, the assistant chiefs, and certainly those patrol people, the boots on the ground, we say thank you to, because the level of professionalism and the lack of complaints and lawsuits that we see coming through us at the city council has certainly been a significant change, and we thank you for that. The entire city staff, the ones that pick up our garbage, the ones that plow our streets in the middle of the night, they're out there with water breaks, and much more things that we never hear about, because it's their job and they do it well. And if it's one thing I've learned while I was in public service, is that usually you don't hear about the jobs that are being done well. You usually hear about when someone doesn't do a job well, and that spends a couple days in the paper. So when you do a good job, many times you don't get recognized for it, and I certainly want to recognize the entire city staff. When you walk into this building at night and you see how beautiful it is, it doesn't happen on its own. Our maintenance staff are fantastic. I can't say enough about the dedication of the staff in the city of Schenectady. And lastly, our neighborhood organizations, they are the bedrock of our community. These unpaid devoted workers have transformed many of their neighborhoods and contributed greatly to our community. One shiny example, and one very near and dear to my heart, because it's where my family and I spent many summers, is up in the Woodlawn Park. This park was abandoned for many years, leaving a swimming pool full of garbage and looking like a disaster waiting to happen. But with the commitment of neighbors, this once eyesore has been transformed into a beautiful park, and serves as a site where many of our community heroes, our other community volunteers that have passed on, have also been honored. Many things happening in Bellevue, in Mount Pleasant, the North Side, Upper Union Street, Hillerville neighborhoods, and all the neighborhoods throughout the city of Schenectady, they've all done a wonderful job to try to bring up the city to the place where it needs to be. Most importantly, though, I want to thank my family, my friends, and most importantly, my husband Cliff, love you dearly, for the ability to do my job as a council member, and for the support that you've all given me so far. I wish my council members the very best, and I look forward to seeing the city continue to move in a positive direction. Mr. Mayor, where are you? There, you're over there. And I thank you for all the support and friendship you've given me over the years. So with that, I say goodbye, good luck to everyone, and thank you for listening.[1763.01][1763.01](APPLAUSE)
Mr. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Denise, I wasn't.
Denise, I wasn't quite sure what to give you, just a reminder of your years of service, but I thought the most appropriate thing would be "The Key to the City," in case you ever change your mind and need to get back in.
Pull that word.
Yes, it does. But just for her commitment to public service is legendary, long, and impressive. She is renowned for her loyalty, tenacity, and independence, and determination to fight for her convictions and passions. The occasion, the consistency applies, is a common sense and compassionate attitude to everything she fights for, no matter how unpopular it was. The city of Schenectady would like to thank Denise Brucker for a multitude of exemplary years of service, and I'm proud to present to you "The Key to the City" on this 13th day of January.
All right, we have one public hearing tonight regarding a proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 230-2 of the Code of the City of Schenectady related to consolidation of residential lots. I have no one signed up, so I'm going to declare that public hearing closed. We'll move on to approval of the minutes for both December 23rd and January 1st. Okay, moved by Ms. Parrazo, seconded by Mr. Mutiveren. All in favor? Aye. All right. Communications and petitions.
Communications and petitions presented to the city council for Monday, January 13th, 2014. Under official from the mayor, a list of appointments dated January 13th, 2014. Under general, there are none, and there are no petitions.
Committee reports.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of things. First of all, I want to talk about the recent released pilot information for Metroplex, soon to be up on the city website, but I think there is sometimes a misperception that pilot agreements don't benefit the city, or people aren't paying taxes. And just to clear that up, 38 of the 47 current pilot projects were actually originally empty buildings, and/or they were vacant land or tax-exempt property, and these sites now generate, or at the time, generated minimal or no taxes at all, and prior to the economic development projects, but now, they do. And the nine other projects are company expansions, and we went from $14.18 million in payments to local governments in 2013, and that's up from $9.23 million in 2012. So we are increasing on a regular basis, and from 2012 to 2013, we actually increased by 53%, which is quite significant. And I just want to thank our economic development team, and also, like I said, we'll have this information up on our website, because I think it's important for people to understand and have awareness of. In addition to that, an update on the civilian police review board. A couple cycles ago, I made a promise that I would get it up and running, and all of our appointments regarding the entities out in the community are full. We're getting commitment and recommitment from the people that have been appointed. We've received six resumes that were sent out to the council today for their input, and we'll be making, I hope, our appointment the next cycle round, and we'll be going forward with the next police review meeting on its regular date, which is Wednesday, February 11th. So, good news, and we'll keep plugging away at that. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Any other committee reports? All right. If not, then we'll move to privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I have one person signed up, and that's Eunice Choffey. Ms. Choffey, are you here?
It's not. Good evening, everybody. I just want to say that I think it's wonderful that Mr. Richard Homeneck volunteered to be on the Schenectady Civilian Police Review Board, because certainly he didn't have to do this. But I think it's wonderful that he did, and he should be an asset. So, I thank him very much.
Okay. Thank you. All right. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda, the consent agenda. Okay, Mrs. Brucker, seconded by Mr. Erickson.
I have one question.
Okay.
If we have a Foster Avenue property that was also supposed to be in that discussion, I just want to make sure we have it all.
I think we just had two of the three properties.
Was there a Foster Avenue, and then there was a Duane Avenue?
Hattie Street.
I thought it was a Foster Avenue, but one consolidation, not a location.
No, it's Hattie Street.
Okay.
Foster Avenue, it was 459 Hattie Street.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So it has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. We'll now move to privilege of the floor regarding city business. I have nine people signed up. The first is Jason Plank.
Council President, City Council, Mayor. I want to let everyone know, two weeks from now is the Community Development Block Grant Public Hearing. Again, after every year, they keep sending out the RFP and then ask for the public comments from the public. Again, this is backwards. Also too, is that in about another 13 more months, we've got to do a five-year update on the five-year consolidated plan. One of the components in that consolidated plan has not been jobs. You have asked for 100 jobs, and that has not been addressed, nor has any proposals been going out for that. You know, the other piece of the puzzle is the affirmative action manager's position. We need to be able to take a look at what failures it has done. A year ago, it said that it did not even comply with affirmative action for Erie Boulevard. And that was over $13 million of federal funds went into that, and that affirmative action was in compliance. So we've lost jobs and so forth. Also too, is this consolidated plan, we need to know exactly where the additional, about $68,000, is going to come out of that. Is that going to come out of the 15%? Or is that going to come out of the back-of-the-house Community Development Block Grant, which is the $2 million? Of course, that's the portion of it for the $3 million grant that you guys are applying for. So we need to know some of those items of what's going to happen, because that's going to be about a 20% reduction across the board if it comes out of that 15%. So all these nonprofits are going to lose 20%. So we need to address some of these issues and put them forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Joy Harv, Schenectady. I got a suggestion that what we should do when the snow comes down, have, park on one side so they can plow the streets right. That's what they need to do. Then the next day, they park on the opposite side, because I think the streets will be cleaned up a lot better. And I say, we got a lot of potholes, Lord Liberty Street, Crane Street, and it's these potholes, and they need to salt these hills more, a lot everywhere, because it's dangerous for somebody to walk on that ice and fall down. And you need to clean up around, down here too, a little more, put like a path or something so people can cross from one side of the street to the other side, because that's what needs to be done in Schenectady.
Okay, thank you.
Tony Benome, Bellevue. I got concerned myself and a bunch of others residents of the city. One of our councilmen, I've been asked if Mr. Mutiveren is a citizen of the United States. If he is, I'd like to see it in writing. May I have the floor, please?
Go ahead.
I didn't interrupt anyone else when they were up here. And it's just that, let's put this thing behind us once and for all. We had things that happened before the election, now let's put this thing behind us once and for all. And it seems awful silly to me that most of the people that come to these meetings have to sit in the back. It's unbelievable. We never had reserved seating for this. I wish that we knew about it ahead of time, maybe wouldn't have been down here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Congratulations, Mayor McCarthy, for the wonderful, inspiring State of the City address. It's been five months since I was before you to talk about our wonderful Polish-American festival. I'd like to take this brief moment to publicly thank our Neighborhood Watch, especially Fred Lee and Sean Allen, for the tremendous job they did at our Polish-American Festival, and the wonderful job they do every day in our city. A sincere thank you from myself, the Polish-American community, and the residents of our city. Thank you, Neighborhood Watch, for being there for us.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President, and members of city council. My name's Spiro Zulis, and I am Chair of the Woodlawn Park Redevelopment Committee, a committee of the Woodlawn Neighborhood Association. I just want to extend my gratitude and thanks to the city. Just this past Wednesday, we held our third annual ZD and Meatball Dinner fundraiser at the Woodlawn Reform Church, and each year it gets better and better, and it grows and grows. We've sold more tickets, we've raised more money towards the redevelopment efforts of Woodlawn Park. So I thank all the elected officials who came out that night, some of which are in this room, also from the county government as well, so I appreciate that. I also want to extend a thanks to the neighborhood leaders from the other neighborhood associations who came out that night, as well as the community, many of which are in Woodlawn, but also outside of Woodlawn. The work we do couldn't have been done without our dedicated and devoted staff of volunteers, so I appreciate that, and to the many, many businesses who donated product and items for our auction raffle, which is continually growing and expanding, and raises a lot of money for that. So I just wanted to say thank you for supporting our efforts over the past years, and I really appreciate that, and we look forward to next year's annual ZD dinner. Just to give you an update with the park, within the last year, we've made a lot of progress, thanks to the mayor and the city, particularly the Office of General Services, and we appreciate that. We filled the non-viable pools, we brought down the fences, we built benches, flower beds, and just had a dedication in the fall for an area of reflection, and we had stuff donated from Retree Schenectady, and a lot of improvements to the park that really made it beautiful. So we're looking forward to continuing our efforts over that, and again, thank you to the dedicated staff of the Office of General Services. Appreciate it, you guys. And then just looking forward ahead over the next year, some of the things we're working with, with the mayor and the city, as well as with our volunteers, is we want to add a new sign at the entryway to the park, also add some arbors coming in along the way. One of the common area where the major pool was filled in, we want to make a common multipurpose area, and then at this time next year, convert that in the winter times for an ice skating rink. So we're looking forward to that. We're also working in partnership with Capital District Community Gardens to add a community garden, platform staging area, and some things to add to the park for the children. So we're looking forward to working with the city over the next year. So I appreciate all of your efforts, your dedication and your support. And lastly, to Denise, with appreciation, I personally will miss your service to the city and your dedication, particularly with our initial efforts to redevelop the park. You were there when we first started and supported us when we got off the road, so I appreciate that, and you will be missed. Thank you.
And Spiro, we appreciate all your efforts, too. You've done a tremendous amount of work on this.
Good evening, again. I would like to say that I personally am thrilled that the council has six resumes to consider for the Police Review Board. As you probably know by now, that I was on the review board for three years, and I had to get off because I moved. And it was going quite well, and we had the correct number of people on the board. And then, this last year, it's just been really difficult to get new people to want to be on the board. And now with six resumes, I really feel that the board will be completed, and there will be a, can't think of the word.
Quorum.
Help me out. Quorum. And there will be a quorum so that they can have their scheduled meeting. And I think it will be very good for Lieutenant Barbara Galata, too, because he has come several times on the scheduled date with police reports to be reviewed, and there hasn't been a quorum, and so the reports didn't get reviewed. And that's kind of a shame for a policeman to give up his time like that, and plus the other people who did come. So I think this is all going to work out very well, and I wish Ms. Parrazo lots of luck with what she's doing. I understand she's taken over the Police Review Board. Is that right, Ms.? No. You're not going to be the chairman?
No.
No. Well, temporarily, you are, right? Okay. All right. Well, I thank you, and while I have the podium, I wish Denise Brucker a wonderful time in her new house, and I'm sure she'll get very active there, too. I don't think she'll sit down and just take care of her dogs and her husband. So I wish you the best. Thank you all very much.
Mayor McCarthy, President King, city council members. It's a proud day for Mount Pleasant to have Reverend Bookout up there. It's a proud day for Mount Pleasant to have John Mutiveren here. We want to thank both of you for all your doing. I want to just express thanks for everyone who came out to our first workshop this past Thursday night at the Faith Deliverance Tabernacle Church. We had people representing the Boys and Girls Club, someone from the Schenectady Little League. We had Pastor Bookout's Jim's Jim. We had a new fellow, Oren Tucker, with the Schenectady Basketball Club. We had enough people there to network and come up with some ideas for some new programs for the youth in Mount Pleasant, as well as educating them on the programs that we already have. We also did have members of the Police Department. We also did have members of the Police Department there, and they networked with us also. They are in agreement with us that we need programs for our kids. And we are all in agreement that we need some improvements in our parks. I especially want to thank Mayor McCarthy for his help with us getting some plans going with improving the Orchard Park. And for residents to know that there are going to be some improvements there that will make you proud of Mount Pleasant again. I just want to thank Floyd Slater for all of his help in Orchard Park, and special thoughts are with him this evening. I also want to comment on Neighborhood Watch. We did have Fred Lee there. We also had Wayne Kurtzner. Jim Reed was there for a while. And our own John Horton is a member of Neighborhood Watch. We believe that Neighborhood Watch is very useful. I'd like to see it expand. What we need is volunteers to come forward, to go through the background check, to attend the police meetings, and to expand this to the point where our citizens can feel safe walking in our neighborhood. Again, I want to thank City Council members, especially Vince Riggi for his help in getting no smoking signs up to the parks. For Lisa Brazzo's project with the anti-graffiti, we'll be working with you. Marion Porterfield, Anti-Litter and Jobs Creation, will be working with you. John Mutiveren, we really look forward to working with you. And Mr. Erickson, it's been great getting to know you better, and we hope we're going to be working closely with you all. So thank you so very much.
Thank you. Angelica Morris.
Thank you, Council President King, Mayor McCarthy, and City Council, and to Pastor Bookout, and to everyone here. I'm Angelica Morris. I'm the Executive Director of the Schenectady County Human Rights Commission. I just want to make an announcement regarding our upcoming Martin Luther King celebration on Sunday, January 19th. At 2:00, we are doing a community rally. The commission is doing some things different. We're moving in a different direction. So at 2:00, we are doing a community rally. And that is going to be a filming, a 20-minute filming on the speech of "I on the Mountain Top" that Dr. Martin Luther King did before he was assassinated. The 2:30 service will start at the First United Methodist Church. With the speaker this year will be Dean Penelope Andrews. She is the 17th president, the first female president of Albany Law School. She is a native South African, as well as she worked on the side with Nelson Mandela. So I am encouraging everyone here to be part of our celebration. We have, this is going to be our 28th year. We're looking forward to everyone here to be part of that celebration and to embrace the dream that Dr. King had. Our theme this year is what role will you play to bring justice for all? And everyone in this room are leaders, either if you're a leader in a community, if you're a teacher or you're a parent. We're all leaders. And it is our job and our role to make sure that we protect and respect everyone's rights here in the city of Schenectady, but not only in the city, but in the county. So I want to thank you for this time and space. Also, I want to thank Denise Brucker for your time, your dedication and your service, not only to the city, but also to our students. Our students are very important. And not only that, for me personally, I want to say thank you for my time working here in City Hall. We built that relationship and a friendship, so I want to say thank you and wish you well. And Mr. Mayor, thank you for inviting me here to your State of the City and continuing to do a great service for our residents and continue to respect and protect everyone's rights and bring justice here in cities Schenectady. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Morris, were you going to also mention the meetings coming up about the library?
Yes. The county library, the commission is working with the library and some other organizations regarding the new literacy center. And the meetings will be taking place this Saturday, the 18th, at 10:00 a.m. at the library. And then our next Tuesday, at 6:30 at the library. If you have any information, the county library. The county library. Downtown county library. So if you have any information, please contact me at 377-3823, or Karen Bradley at the library. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Chad Putman.
Good evening, Madam President, Mayor McCarthy, City Council, and residents. My name is Chad Putman. I'm the Deputy City Clerk. And the City Clerk Chuck Thorne asked me to make this public announcement. Schenectady City Code is now available online and on your smartphone. The searchable code provides 24/7 access to city code. The e-code can be accessed through the city's website, cityofschenectady.com. Links are available on the main page, the Corporation Council page, and the City Clerk's page. The city code is accessible on any PC, Mac, Linux computer platform, and runs on any web browser. It automatically customizes for optimal viewing on mobile devices such as smartphones and tablets. Specific chapters, sections, or articles can be bookmarked on your web browser for quick access. Updated ordinance are published alongside the code in a new law section to ensure the most current version of Schenectady law is also available. 2014 council agendas and minutes will be posted in searchable public document sections. The interface is clean, clutter-free, and highly intuitive. The online version is replacing the old blue binders. For more information, you can contact the City Clerk's office at 382-5089. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up, so I'm going to declare this portion of the meeting closed. We'll move to miscellaneous business of the council. Mr. Riggi.
...for your service to the city. We both go back a long ways, you on the council, me on the other side of the rail. But I appreciate, you know, when I came on the council, your service and the way you've brought me in to be part of this council. So thank you very much for your services. Appreciate it. Today, I'm sure a lot of people are, as a matter of fact, I called our Superintendent of Streets today, and he started laughing when he picked up the phone, because it's about potholes. They're all over the city. This is one of those years where we had terrible cold weather and then warm weather. So when you get that freeze thaw, there's going to be potholes all over, and the city is doing their best to keep up with them. It's a process that takes a lot of time and kind of, in this kind of weather, it's tough and it doesn't last. And talking to Mike Serone today, he's kind of excited about there could be a new process, and we'll have to investigate this as a council, where we would be able to recycle ground-up amicite and to make a permanent patch in these holes instead of a cold patch. And that would save the city a lot of money in the long run. There may be an upfront cost, you know, but I think, according to Mike, he thinks we could recoup that within two or three years. But this way, we don't have our city crews wasting their time. Cold patching a hole that's going to, within a couple of days, it could be gone. So this is something exciting, something to look forward to. But I just want to let all the people know, if the holes are out there, if you see standing water in the road, don't drive over it, because there's a pretty good chance there's a hole under there. It could do some damage to your car. That's just one of those things. On that note, for the city crews, we had a problem at the Cotton Hollow Factory Bridge. I believe it was on January 6th, just after New Year's, where an expansion joint opened up. And I want to thank the city crews for being able to get that bridge back in order again, because that was, you know, we have, the Oak Street Bridge has been down, and with that bridge down, it could cause some real problems. City crews got there, and Rich Wassneyak, George Allard, and Bob Graffini from 106, operating engineers, they did a good job in making that usable, and the bridge was opened back up. And I can't say enough about that, because that's something that could have been another problem that we had. But our city force, workforce went in there and they did the job. And I'm appreciative for it, and I'm sure the whole city is. And, you know, I know we get a lot of phone calls about city street crews, plowing crews and this. Everything is a team effort, as we know. And to make it a team effort, everybody has to get along together and do what they can to make their job a little easier, too. When the streets are plowed, when people throw snow back into the streets, that doesn't help the city at all, and it's illegal. So I know we'll be discussing this, I think, in the next committee cycle, but the crews are doing a good job. These guys are out there. Even in that terrible fire we had on Christmas Eve, the firemen did a terrific job in awful, awful conditions. But so did our street guys. They had to be out there with the salt and keeping the streets clear. So it's all a team effort, and we all know that. So I just appreciate all the work that they've been doing. Lastly, this Friday, we had 47 police recruits graduated from the Zone 5 Academy. And we have three people that are going to be ours here in Schenectady that graduated. And I want to say congratulations. We should welcome aboard Patrick Irwin, Patrick Verret, and Kyle Willetts. They're three officers that are going to be going on the street. They passed the, they're through the academy, so this is good news for us. And I'm really looking forward to seeing them come and do the hard job that it is being a police officer in the city of Schenectady. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Erickson.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to thank Mayor McCarthy for coming in today and providing us a State of the City, an update of the progress and an update of the future vision that you have. And I think it was great. I mean, there's a lot of things that you've been doing since you got here, and I think as mayor, and with regards to just taking a different perspective of things. The road paving, you know, there's a different process now that we do with road paving. And we have crews that are doing some of the roads themselves. It's just a cost-saving process. We don't, it's not like we don't do it the other way, but we find the right fit for the right job. And so things like that, thinking in new ways, I give you a lot of credit. We got recycling. I know you talked about recycling today, and I think that's very important. And I'm looking forward to seeing what the new slogan and the new process has to do with the city and how it starts with "Me Too." So I think it's great. The code on the website, I think it's huge. I think that's something that so many people have been looking for. It's so common sense, and we finally got it. And I think that's going to help a lot of people really be able to navigate. And it provides us, it's customer service, it's user-friendliness when people need to understand what the requirements are, what they do, or how things function. So I think that's wonderful. Joy Hall came up, one of our regulars, talked about the snow and snow emergencies and what side of the street to park on, and a very timely concern that she had. And I've asked to be put on the committee cycle next week, and I believe we'll have that on the committee cycle. And the appropriate people from the city staff that could explain when we call a snow emergency, when we don't, when you're supposed to park and what side of the streets. And so we get asked that question quite a bit. And I think it's important that we have somebody come in and explain it, make sure we understand it, and then we're better equipped to communicate it to members of the public. So hopefully, we'll have some more information committee cycle, and then we could talk about it at the next council meeting two weeks from now. And lastly, Ms. Brucker, thank you very much. Your service on this council, I'm not the first one to say it tonight, but is greatly appreciated. It's been really great working with you on budgets, on problems, on issues, on learning how things work. And your experience has been very valuable. And so sorry to see you go, but best of luck to you. Thank you.
You, too. Okay, Ms. Brazzo.
Yes, I would personally and publicly thank Denise, because contrary belief, there's no manual on how to be a city council member. And, you know, Denise was there to keep me calm when I got panicky and calm me down when I got too excited and just be my mentor. And I really appreciate it. She helped my entry into the council to go much smoother for me. And I've learned so much, and I continue to learn from you at every single meeting. You ask really thoughtful questions, and you have the historic perspective that I think is vital to have. And I'm going to miss you terribly. And thank you, really thank you for all the help that you did give me in navigating through my first couple of years on the council. And with that being said, I don't want to take up too much time, because I am sure that everyone wants to rush right home and read the city code tonight. So I won't keep you any longer.
Okay. Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. I just have one announcement, actually, and it's that time of year again, and the taxman cometh. So there is a program that's being held, that's held all over the United States, but Schenectady has it as well, the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, commonly known as VIDA. And VIDA provides tax, provides free tax return services for individuals who make $51,000 or less. So in the city of Schenectady, there is SCAP that will be providing tax services, Union College, and a mega site which is located at Ellis, the Ellis Campus on McClellan Street. So this year, because of the problem in the government, the taxes won't be filed for individuals beginning the 31st of January. But for businesses, because we have a lot in the audience, they could start filing theirs on the 13th. But this may not be a service necessarily that they would use. But I think it's important that people know that they can get their tax returns provided that's free of service. The volunteers are certified and trained, so they can't, you know, it's not just somebody walking off the street doing your taxes. They have to train and actually pass a test. So that service is available to people to be able to save money and to reinvest their money back into the city. And also, I would also like to mention that there is a weatherization program, and we'll have more information about that for individuals who are interested, both renters and homeowners, to be able to get their homes winterized and do it either at a very low cost or free of charge. And I'd also like to wish Denise the best on all of your future endeavors. Good luck. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Again, I want to wish Denise the best in her new endeavors as she transitions out of city government. I failed to acknowledge Gary Hughes from the Schenectady County Legislature, who was here and then left. And Larry Spring, our Superintendent of Schools, has joined us. Larry, I got a couple rounds of applause, but when I mentioned your name, there was a standing ovation. So sorry you missed that. Again, Larry does a great job with the school district, and again, would encourage people to do whatever they can to help him, because he does have an extremely tough job as we try and get work together to make this community better. And again, I wish everyone the best in 2014 and look forward to working with everyone. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And I just also would like to thank everyone for coming. And I also want to commend Mr. Olson and his staff. I think the weather we've had this last week has been a challenge, and I think they've done a really good job. So Carl, thank you. And on that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Riggi, seconded by Mr. Erickson. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.
Hey, perfect. Great to see you. Denise?